All right. Hello, everybody. We're calling to order the Tuesday, September 7th meeting of the Cordera Town Council. We're going to save the roll call and salute to the flag for the public portion of the meeting, and we're going to start with the first agenda item, which is our closed session. We'll start with public comments on tonight's closed session item, and that closed session item is public employee performance evaluation pertaining to the town manager. So we're going to start by taking any public comment, and I am not seeing any members of the public on the line. So seeing none, we're going to close public comment, and the council will now adjourn to closed session, and we'll return at 6:30 to resume the public portion of our meeting. Great, thank you, Rebecca. So we're going to call to order the public portion of the Tuesday, September 7th meeting of the Cordera Town Council. Rebecca, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Ozio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cisneros?
Here.
Mayor Beckman?
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We're going to report out of our closed session. The item that we were having a closed session on was public employee performance evaluation for the town manager, and the town council has taken no reportable action at this time, which brings us to item two in our agenda, open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on our agenda, and members of the public will be given three minutes apiece. Any members who would like to make a open time comment, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org, and we will start with Mr. Wolford.
Good evening. Eli Beckman has endorsed in writing from the mayor's seat Gavin Newsom. Aren't the council members supposed to be nonpartisan? I guess not. So let's review a few items the mayor neglected to cover in his support of Newsom. Californians have a diminishing quality of life. There is a significant increase in regulations and governmental control. Most elected state officials and other bureaucrats like A-Bag are pushing to take away local zoning control, mandating a significant increase in population density while pushing for the elimination of single-family homes, ADU, SB 9 and 10. There is an alarming increase in businesses, large, medium, and small, leaving the state. California, for the first time in history, has depopulated under nuisance tenure. California has the highest gas tax in the U.S., but the governor refuses to adequately fund and fix the roadways. Sadly, 45% of California's roads are rated poor or in poor condition, and California has the top three worst urban area roads in the U.S. Newsom has not supported building more water storage contrary to Prop 1. Quite the opposite, he supports tearing dams down. He supports letting over 50% of California's potable water flow to the bay and ocean. All the while, residential and business customers consume only 10% of the water but will be mandated to conserve by reducing water usage by more than 38% over and above the current drought reductions. There is a major decline in the quality of education with underlying CRT indoctrination. California is the leader and accounts for 30% of the nation's homeless population. Newsom failed to improve EDD's operation. The EDE admitted, or admitted, excuse me, paying as much as $31 billion in unemployment funds to criminals and is expected to run a deficit of $48 billion by the year end. Newsom unilaterally declared there would be no more capital punishment, then allowed COVID-infected inmates to be transferred to San Quentin, which resulted in COVID deaths of 28 inmates. Unfortunately, I would need a lot more time to articulate the many defining quality actions and behavior of Gavin Newsom. Our mayor stated repeatedly that the only existential threat the residents and town of Cordera faces is climate change. I submit to all residents of Cordera. It's not the weather and physical climate that is the greatest threat to our community, our state, our nation, and our well-being. It is the political climate.
Great. Thank you very much, Roy. We're going to move next to Dr. Bundy.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to remind the community that September is coastal cleanup month. Over the past dozen years, Practical Martial Arts and the Cordera Community Foundation have partnered to do an organized coastal cleanup. Because of COVID, we've taken a more disorganized approach and ask individuals to go out on their usual walks, take a bag, pick up trash. Let me know if there's any large items that a truck and other individuals are needed to pick things up, but to try to use the entire month as a coastal cleanup month. We've got a lot of small trash that's around our waterways, a lot of great paths to go on while you're out there for the walk, pick up some of that trash, and get it out of our waterways. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. I do not see any other hands up right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed comments for open time?
I don't believe so, but if you want to give me a moment, it wasn't loading. So I just closed my internet and reopened.
Okay, no problem.
So. Oh, we do have them. Okay, thank you for your patience. I'll read this email now. It is from Jason Ferreira, and it says, Dear Council, it is very exciting to be nearly breaking ground with a new and improved town hall all the time, and work to get to this point deserves recognition. That being said, I would like to invite you to consider what is more beneficial to everyone in the community. We are in unprecedented times. One, a time of COVID where the public can't even attend a town hall meeting. Two, a time when residents' incomes may have decreased when costs are projected to increase, fuel, PG&E, Mill Valley Refuge, MMWD, food rent. Three, a time of telecommuting, a greener, safer option. Three, four, a time of climate change. Five, a time when residents are required to fireproof homes. Six, a time when residents are being required to reduce water use. Citizens are facing multiple challenges, and we should consider what we want to be proud of. Cordera's current population is hovering just below 10,000 people, and the cost of the new town hall building at just below 12 million. Also, consider the 500,000 additional expense for temporarily relocating businesses and staff. Business and staff while construction is taking place, we could, one, offer stimulus checks in the amount of $1,200 for every Cordera resident. Two, we could take a moment to assess the community's more immediate needs. As Barbara Fazio knows, I have presented ideas to the council before from Community Gardens beginning in 2009, and to increasing our water storage capacity in 2011, we certainly would be benefiting from an increased water storage today. Over 12 million taxpayer dollars with these funds, what will be the legacy left that makes us all proud? This could be a great opportunity to finance a safer, more resilient community. So I ask the council at this time, is a new town hall what the community really needs or even wants? If the council does proceed with the construction of the new town hall, I would like to suggest an alternative, additional way to achieve the 60 kilowatt hours of energy from the unfortunate placement slash layout of the solar panels. Wind. Cordera has a fairly reliable resource. I would also like to see water catchment integrated and any excess water runoff to hydrate landscaping. I also do not see bike racks or trash compost, recycling bins, dumpsters in the plan. Mill Valley Refuge. Eli brought up a question that was on my mind as well. Couldn't Cordera alter the 10% profit for Mill Valley Refuge's language to a percentage that was more reasonable? Thank you, Jason. Jay Ferreira.
Great. Thank you very much, Rebecca, and thank you, Jason. Seeing no other hands up, we will close open time. And that brings us to item three on our agenda, which is presentations. And our first presentation tonight is a commendation presented to Jonna Intowski for service to the town of Cordera presented in honor of her retirement from the town of Cordera following over 30 years of employment. And I'm going to turn it over to staff to introduce the item.
Daria is in the meeting, and Jonna has been moved over and should be joining the meeting as a panelist momentarily.
And I just want to say it's a, just really says a lot about Jonna, says a lot about the town. You know, 30 years anywhere is really amazing. And when I think about Jonna, Cordera Finance, I think of Jonna. She, you know, when I started back in 1995, she was here. She set me up with my, my file and payroll, and she is the person that we go to when we need historical context, when you need anything personally done, and it's always related to payroll. So it's very personal, and she's, it's, we're gonna, I'm gonna miss her very much, but we're just so excited that she gets to enjoy the next chapter in her life. And Jon, if you're on the call too, if you could give the council an update at the end of, you know, the South Lake, the South Tahoe fires, you know, she has a cabin out there, and I just want to make sure that your house is safe. So that would be nice to know as well, but maybe that green carpet can get burned away. Hopefully, your house is there. Anyway.
Sorry that our video doesn't work, but it's Jonna, Morgan, and Dan, her whole family here. So we're really excited to be here. So thanks for having us. Um, do you want to continue to say, thank you?
Thanks, Morgan.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much for the recognition. It has been an honor to be part of the Cordera Team for over 30 years. It's going to be a weird transition, but it's going to be a good transition, and I'm looking so forward to seeing how the town thrives in the future with the staff that's coming on in my place. And I just really appreciate the support of all these years to myself and my family. So thank you.
And for the cabin?
Oh, and the cabin. Cabin's still there. Thank you firefighters and first responders, and the carpet's still there. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Jonna, for your service. We have, the town council has a certificate of commendation here for you. I don't want to embarrass you too much, but I'd love to read it, just because there's some pretty impressive information in here. So if I may, this is a commendation from the town of Cordera to Jonna Intowski for service to the town. And it says, whereas Jonna Intowski has worked diligently and faithfully for the town of Cordera since November 1990, when she began working for the town as an accounting clerk, and whereas Jonna's integrity, hard work, dedication, and commitment to the town earned her promotions to business license clerk, accounting technician, and financial analyst, and whereas Jonna's dedication to revenue collection resulted in the Marin Independent Journal publishing an article in 1994 recognizing her success, and whereas Jonna's tenure as secretary for the California Municipal Business Tax Association earned her commendation from the organization, and whereas Jonna has completed accounting and computer courses in order to further her education and provide professional service to the town, and whereas Jonna has provided excellent service to town employees in areas of payroll and benefits and is regarded as an expert in these areas, and whereas Jonna was instrumental in converting the town's finances to new software systems on several occasions, now therefore, the town council of the town of Cordera does hereby commend Jonna Intowski and express its profound appreciation for her significant and invaluable services to the town of Cordera spanning more than three decades. She is truly an essential member of our town's family. So thank you so much, Jonna. Your service is greatly appreciated. You really are, you know, you've really become such an integral part of this town. It's not going to be the same without you, and you will be missed dearly.
Thank you. I'll miss you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jonna.
Congratulations, Jonna, and thank you again for joining us. And are there any other elements to this presentation, Todd, or does that conclude that item?
That's it.
Okay, great. Well, thanks again, Jonna. We appreciate all you've done for the town. That concludes item 3A and brings us to item 3B, which is an update from the Marin Municipal Water District regarding current drought restrictions and conservation measures. And we're going to be receiving a presentation from Lucy Croy, their water quality manager.
I'm moving Lucy over to panelists now. And she should be joining us shortly.
Hello, Lucy. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Hard to follow after that one. I'm Lucy Croy, the water quality manager with Marin Water, and I'm going to give an update on the drought. I'm going to pull up my screen real quick.
And she should be able to share. Oh, good.
Okay. Okay, so I believe in back in April, Carrie Pollard, our water efficiency, water use efficiency manager, came and gave a initial presentation on the drought and where we were at back in April. And so this is a bit of an update now moving into September. And thank you, council members, for allowing me this time in your, in your meeting. So tonight, I'll give a brief update on our water supply, where we're at going into September, the water use restrictions that are currently in place, and then finish off with the conservation tips, rebates, and resources that we have available through Marin Water. And then answer any questions that come up at the end. So first off, a bit of an overview on Marin Water for those that are not familiar. 100% of our water is locally sourced. 75% of it comes from Mount Tam and West Marin. So if you've ever been out to Phoenix Lake or Kent Lake, that's where much of our water comes from. And then another 25% comes from the Sonoma County Russian River system and comes down, down that way. And all along, it takes about 24 hours for the water to come from our reservoirs to your top and is treated and tested and monitored all along to maintain high quality and make sure that it remains reasonably well-priced. So the reason I'm here tonight is really to give an update on water supply. Over the last two years, we've had very consecutive dry years. 2020 was the second driest year in 90 years. And then going into 2021, we've received just 38% of average rainfall so far. And where that's left us is at 38% of total capacity, just going into the, just the end of August, beginning of September. And typically, around this time of year, we would really, we'd be about double where we are right now. So these are pretty historic times for us. As I mentioned, since 1984, we really haven't seen our reservoirs this low going into September. And this is significant for us because some of the most major water supply projects for us occurred back in that, the early 1980s and late 1970s, due not for the '77 drought. So we increased our storage with Suleh Reservoir, and then also increased the capacity of Kent Dam. And now, you know, looking at 2020, we're seeing just about the lowest storage level in that amount of time, which goes to show really how severe this drought has been. So an updated reservoir production over the next year. So the black line on the left showing what our reservoir storage levels have looked like since the beginning of 2020. And then here we are just at the middle of the graph going into September. And really, much is not known going into the next winter season. So we've, we've put out a few projections using historical rainfall runoff data to understand kind of brackets of where we could end up. So this lower line being 25% of average rainfall runoff, and then on the upper end, average rainfall runoff. And then in the bold and the solid line here, both in the green and the blue, those are showing the impact of conservation savings. So the 40% conservation savings that the district has been putting out is, is really, this is really showing that impact that it can have on our reservoir storage over the next year if we're able to achieve that with the help of our customers. So over the past few months, we've seen quite a bit take off, not just with Marin Water, but around the Bay Area and around the state. So back in February, we, we were on the front end of it and declared a drought relatively early and asked our customers to voluntarily conserve water, hoping that we would receive a, quite, quite a large quantity of water going into the end of the spring. But unfortunately, we didn't. And, and going into April, we declared a water shortage emergency and adopted mandatory water use restrictions. In May and July, we adopted more tighter restrictions, limiting the amount of irrigation, outdoor irrigation. So where those water use restrictions are right now is that there's a 40%, a goal of a 40% reduction system-wide. Outdoor spray irrigation is limited to one day per week on a designated day. So for Cordera, the designated day is Wednesday. And then for drip irrigation, we're limiting it just to two days a week, and there's no assigned days. And then any, any hand watering is exempt because it's a much more efficient way to go about watering your plants and keeping things alive through these, these historic times and trying times. A few of the other restrictions we have in place, really to minimize water waste, is, is really no gutter flooding, so no wasting water down the gutters, not wait, not washing vehicles at home, and really not water, watering between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and that's to minimize any kind of evaporative losses that could be had. Our focus throughout this has really been on education with our customers, first and foremost, providing an ordinance process for variances. Providing a variance process for exemptions for hardship or health and safety reasons. And, and really hearing things out. We know that much of this news very quickly in their circumstances that we may not have known about. For any violations of the water use restrictions that I spoke about, the first really results in a written warning, so a door hanger with a written warning as well that comes in the mail, just to make sure that you understand what these water use restrictions are with the drought. We know that, you know, you may know about the drought, but you may not know about the water use restrictions that are in place. And then beyond that, any second violations would receive a $20, $25 fine, and any subsequent would be a $250 fine. So our outreach has really been focused on conservation and water savings that can be found outdoors, especially during peak irrigation months, turning off sprinkler systems and watering by hand as much as you can. And then to encourage that, we're also offering a rebate program to replace your lawn with water-efficient landscaping, offering $3 per square foot. It's our cash-for-grass rebate. That's a little bit more of a fun name that you might, might remember after this. And that's actually a really high value for what we've seen around the state. It's just about the highest we've seen anywhere else with any other agency. So other agencies typically offer just about $1 per square foot. And then we also offer any kind of free water-saving kits, so shut-off nozzles, low-flow showerheads, really encouraging anyways that you can save water, especially during this drought period. So a few of the other rebates that we have available that you may not know about right now, we have this bloom water monitor, which has really taken off in the community. It attaches directly onto your water meter and it provides real-time data. So it's shown over here on the right, and that's the interface that's on your phone. You can see on an hour-by-hour or even, I think, 15-minute interval, how much water is being used in your home. And so it's a little bit more of an understanding of how much water is actually occurring. And then we have a variety of other rebates that are just out there to encourage more efficient use in the community. So if you think it's out there, we probably have it on our website, and we would love to hear if there's more out there that you'd like to see. So I'd reference also to our MarinWater.org backslash rebates. In addition, we have a conservation department that is available for phone consultation to really help you find what the best programs or rebates are best for you. And they're available to contact both through the phone and then also through email. There's a bit of a backlog, you can imagine, right now, but we are working to, to really get back in contact with our customers as quickly as possible to provide that service. And then another exciting offering that we have just opened up in the last three, three to four weeks is the recycled water filling station. This is on Armory Drive, just over by the Civic Center. And it's open from Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this is where any, any Marin County resident can go and pick up recycled water for free. You can pick up between 5 to 300 gallons per trip. And there's applications that are available on our website, but you can also just show up. But you do need to bring your own containers. And so we do have some resources that are on our website pointing to, pointing you to where you can get those in the meantime. So a few other are yard signs that we have for sure, staying connected to Marin Water, and then really looking out in the community, so reporting water waste when you see it. We have a report on our website as well as a phone hotline or an email address. Really, we, we are open ears to our customers, and we know that you are the eyes and ears out there. So we really appreciate kind of, you know, the, the effort that goes into looking around the community, making sure that water waste doesn't occur during this period, or any period really, but especially right now, while our, while our focus is on conserving what water we have. So with that, I'll leave you with a bit of more information of how to contact us, more of the fam conservation@marinwater.org, and then 1520 is the best number. So with that, thank you, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Great. Thank you so much, Lucy. That was some sobering information about a pretty troubling situation that we find ourselves in. So thank you very much for, for bringing us that information. We'll start with questions from council members, then we'll go to any questions or comments from members of the public. Fred?
Yeah, just two quick comments. We installed Bloom, I think, about four or five months ago, and we like it a lot. You can track it on the app and see exactly where you are water-wise. So kudos for connecting with that company. And plus, I believe you guys gave a rebate at that time of we signed up for it.
We, we still are. I think it got cut from the PowerPoint, so I apologize. But what, so we, we cover 100 bucks and you pay 50 bucks for the bloom. So that should still be the rebate. So that's great to hear.
Yeah, it's a pretty good deal. And then the other thing is, we had a neighbor who had the perfect lawn. He did your cash for grass, and he told me it didn't cost him a dime to have his grass removed between, from the rebate, what the water department gave. He also mentioned another program, which I'm not sure if it's through the water district or not. I think he called it mulch madness.
Yeah. So, so we did have a second, a second rebate program that was focused on lawn replacement, so mulch madness, but that is just wrapping up now. It was with help from the Conservation Corps, and just due to staffing, it's going to go through October. So we're not accepting any more applications, and we're going to focus more of our resources on the cash for grass, the $3 per square foot.
Okay. Again, just between those two programs, his lawn came out and it looks decent because it's mulch. So he plans on putting, you know, low drought resistant plants eventually. So kudos for those programs.
And that's exactly what we want to hear. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Any other questions from council members? Leela?
Thanks. And thanks, Lucy. Just a couple of quick questions. I know it, there's no car washing at home, and I think I saw something about going to car washes that recycle water. Is that, are all Marin car washes recycling water now, or do you know the situation with that?
Um, we, there are a list on our website that point you to purely recycled water. So those that are more in the Terlinda area, because that's where our recycled water system is. And then there are a number that are also used for circulated water. So that's also good to go. So that, you know, we're really encouraging people to just minimize how much white waste happens at home.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. And then just in terms of the, the free stuff, the faucet generators and the yard signs and things like that, how do people get a hold of those?
So they can email the conservation@marinwater.org, and we will set up a time for them to come, pick it up from our, our office in Cordera. Or if there's an easier way to get it to them, we'll work with them to figure it out. But that's, that's the easiest way. So.
Great. Thank you, Leela. Good questions. Any other questions from council members? And if not, actually, I have one quick question. I was just curious, on this goal of saving 40%, how are we doing?
So it's a good question. Week over week, we've seen it vary a little bit, but we've, we've moved the, we've moved it a bit towards 30%. We're getting closer and closer. And so over, I think over the last week, we saw about 26%. The week before, it had been 30%. So it gives, it takes time, and we hope that over time, different habits can change.
Great. Thank you. If there are no other questions from council members, we're going to go ahead and turn this over to the public. So any member of the public who would like to ask a question or comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom, and we'll get you on here three minutes apiece. And we will start with Mr. Bundy.
Lucy, great presentation. Looking at it from 10,000 feet, I think Marin County is somewhat at a disadvantage because we've got the potable water providers, MMWD for us, North Marin Water for Nevada and such. The potable water providers, MMWD for us, North Marin Water for Nevada and such. And then the recycling water from the sanitary districts are separate. From attending North Bay Watershed District over the past number of years. I've been impressed that the agencies that are combined, you know, both water providers as well as sanitary districts providing recycled water. Are sort of more efficient and they're able to get out more recycled water. What I I would like to see is more recycled water piped to Cordera. I know that there's a pipe that's on the. South side of San Quentin Peninsula. If we could pipe that over the. Cordera Creek, over the Sir Francis Drake. And get that to where there's some recycling along the marsh as well as both of our malls and and some of the median strips for the town and the town park. You know, I think that would be a great benefit. I know there's costs associated with the infrastructure on that. But once that's in, you know, we have access to recycled water. Thank you.
That's that's a great comment and that's something we are always looking at ways to to make more feasible through grants and through opportunities, working with the sewage agencies. So as you mentioned, right now our recycled water infrastructure is is focused in the Terlinda area through Los Goinas Valley Sanitary. And then, you know, any connection south towards Cordera, we would need quite a bit of capital improvement. And investments in order to to get there, but we are actively looking and looking at ways to 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 make that feasible. So we hear you and we are actively working on it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Bob. We're going to go to Roy next. We'll bring Roy on here.
Good evening, Lucy. Good talking with you again. Are you at liberty to discuss or mention anything about the the revenue of the water district? In the reduction of water, so the the two month period compared to to last year. Reduced the the water usage fifty eight percent. That resulted in a forty percent lower water bill payment. And that's that's quite a hit and that's just on the the variable uses on the water flow because we have the fixed. Part of the bill that doesn't change. And then the other question I have is. What is the reluctance for a D cell or issues around the desalinization plant other than the financials? So financials are always important. But interested if you you could make any comments on those two items I've asked, revenue and desalinization.
I'm not sure I fully understood your first question about the the finance impact. I know, you know, from. Stepping back from from this drought, we expect that it will be a large impact just from revenue loss. From the variable costs and so we're expecting, you know, if if we are able to achieve forty percent savings. It would be twenty plus million in revenue loss for us. And that's in addition, you know, in addition to any kind of. Costs of of infrastructure improvements or. Drought projects that we're we're putting in place in order to maximize our our current water supply. So that's, you know. One piece that we've been looking at and then with the desalination. With respect to the the drought, you know, we've been looking at this. Primarily in as an emergency situation. As as the drought has hit very with with quite a bit of severity, much much more severe than anything we've seen in our reservoirs. And so projecting out the next eight, twelve to eighteen months, we're seeing that. You know, we need to make sure that we have enough supply to treat to to provide our our customers with. Very soon and and given that, we did a feasibility study at the same in tandem with looking at the. The emergency intertie across the Richmond Centerfield Bridge. And continue, you know, we continue to look at both. But with the desalination, we found initially that it was it was much more challenging to find. We weren't, we actually weren't finding any facilities that were available at the amount of capacity we needed to provide enough water to our customers. And it was at exceedingly high cost. So at an initial feasibility level, we we pushed our resources more towards the bridge, towards the pipeline across the bridge in our time.
Great, thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Roy. We're going to go to a call in number next, starting with nine one four. And to this call in participant, you should be able to unmute yourself. And it looks like you are now unmuted and permitted to talk. We're not hearing anything. Oh, there we are.
This is Jean Greenbaum. I don't know what.
You're good.
Number is, but. Yeah, so I live at the Village Green in Cordera on the Casabuena Drive and we have a well that that we just haven't covered near our pool. And are there any restrictions preventing us from putting a pump into that well and and using it for landscaping and the pool maybe?
No, there there are no restrictions on well use during this and we don't actually oversee. You would need to check with the County of Marin for permitting well use.
So that would have to be permitted as far as you know?
Yeah, but it should be a relatively straightforward process, so.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jean. I'm not seeing any other hands up, so I'll just ask Rebecca to do a quick check in case anybody emailed in any questions or comments on this.
No, I think we did not receive any emails or comments on this item.
Great, thank you. Then we will close public comment and bring it back to the council in case there are any last questions or comments on this presentation. We'll start with Charles.
Yeah, I had one question. So what's the regulations about taking a large, like basically a vast majority of the recycled water? And dumping it back up into the reservoirs and diluting it and then basically re-treating it. So that you could kind of create a closed loop cycle a little bit. I mean, have we researched that? Is their environment? I mean, is it recycled enough that it's safe for the environment? And is there a certain amount that you could refeed it without, you know, taking it too far? Have you looked at that?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question and it's something I think we'll see much more of in the coming years. Direct direct potable reuse or indirect potable reuse. Depending on how long it sits in the reservoir and. The regulations are still being fully developed, developed and vetted, but there are agencies that inject it into groundwater aquifers and whatnot and. For us, you know, when we've looked at it, similar to what I mentioned with recycled water, the key. You know, the key inhibitor is is really that most of the, most of the wastewater is actually down closer towards the bay, so closer towards. The farther extent of our system, whereas the reservoirs are higher up on the on the mountain, so it would take quite a bit of infrastructure and pumping in order to get it up there. But it is, it is a good option that we'll continue to look at and make sure that it's feasible in the long term.
Yeah, I guess to follow up on that, though, I mean, if we're talking about bringing a pipeline over Richmond, right? Like ultimately, are are the distribution systems up at the reservoirs or are there pump stations? Closer to the municipalities and so therefore if it came over the Richmond Bridge like it did in the past, that the distribution is easier, right? I guess to me it was, there's like a disconnect of we have to take it up to the reservoirs. But then is the pipeline that come from Richmond, is that just go direct to consumer and it doesn't actually like get near the reservoirs or the treatment plants?
Correct, it would have to be completely separate until it's in the reservoirs.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Charles. Any other questions or comments from council members? If not, then Lucy, thank you very much again for being here with us today and sharing that information. That was really helpful. So I know we all appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
Great, thank you. And that concludes our presentations for the evening and brings us to item four on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion and any member of the council or the public. May pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. We'll start with members of the council. Would any council member like to pull an item from our consent calendar? And seeing none, we'll turn it over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion or comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. Via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on consent calendar items?
Did not receive any emails, public comments on consent calendar items.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up from the public, so we will close. Public comment and bring it back to the council for a possible motion on the consent calendar. Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion approved consent items for A through forty.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Great, thank you, Bob. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kisev?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes the consent calendar and brings us to item five, public hearings. Our only public hearing tonight is five A, which is a public hearing to consider providing authorization to the Public Works Director. To execute a facility financing contract with Sonoma and Solar Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and sixty one thousand five hundred and eighty eight dollars. And I will turn it over to staff now.
All right, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to share screen here. Can you see my main screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so. I'm going to talk about the solar and battery storage at the community center in Corp Yard. It's something that we were fortunate enough to. Receive a grant award for to cover the cost of of these amenities that we're proposing to install at a couple of our town owned facilities. So quick rewind back in twenty twenty, we applied for the Cal OES, California Governor's Governor's Office of Emergency Services Grant. And in March, received notification that we were awarded up to three hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost to. Design and procure and install. Solar photovoltaics as well as battery storage at a couple of our essential facilities. So just to clarify, the eligible expenses are for generators for essential facilities. As well as clean energy, green solutions and alternative backup power. So real quickly, I'll talk about Sonoma Marin Solar, who we did some looking into and. They are, they have got great positive reputation, customer reviews. So as part of the RFP process, we solicited. Request for proposals just shortly after receiving authorization for the grant money. And went through that public process and we were, or I'm sorry, this. Company was the only one to submit, so we were lucky enough to have a a company willing to take on this project in a short timeframe. And 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 this was the 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 one company and. They they've had a proven results and a long history of successful projects in the region. They are also very importantly available to do this work immediately. And then quickly, just wanted to touch on the facility financing contract, what it means. I know that part of this staff report you guys are looking at is is. Revolving around the term facility financing contract and. Basically, this just means that this contract we're entering in with this Sonoma and Solar. Includes design, material procurement, plus construction, all rolled into one contract. Namely for an energy conservation facility. So that's a couple of important things and and one tool that that this sidebar that this can be used for is. An alternative method to the formal bidding process. However, as I mentioned, we did go through. The the public, formal public process with with advertising and reviewing applications. So the two proposed locations that we're looking at here. Are the the Corp Yard and the Community Center. The the Corp Yard, the Corporation Yard off of Lucky Drive, as you can see in the bottom left image. The proposed solar is going to go on the south facing roof here. And we wanted to, for both of these facilities, I'll mention, we wanted to capture. A little bit more in the future of what would be needed. And here we we have visions of potentially. Expanding that that medium and light duty fleet for maintenance team into EV. So that was written into our our formal. The RFP for this project to include additional capacity in this system for future EV fleet charging. And then over at the Community Center, you can see bottom right image. The proposed solar to meet the demand is shown in that image, that aerial view. And we took into consideration, I know the the Parks and Rec Division has been looking at. A master plan, a concept of potentially expanding the the size, the use, the demand at this community center location. So we wanted to bake that into this into this study as well. So we asked for the RFP to include design for an additional twenty five percent of usage at this facility. Such that in the future, we could still have a little bit of reserve capacity. And under both conditions, the. The the intent was for this, these two facilities to be able to function. Fully as a as a resource for the community as we have experienced in the past. For three days or seventy two plus hours at least, under a power safety or a public safety power shut off event. And then I realized there was a slide here that I wanted to also touch on. Regarding the the workmanship and material warranty, I kind of skipped right over that and that's an important one. I did want to mention briefly that. Those, those are, they're important and regarding the material warranty. Industry standard twenty five year for the for the solar arrays and the battery warranty. As a ten year warranty, which is industry standard. And one thing that we looked closely into. Was the the submitted LG Chem battery that was provided in this. In this RFP from Sonoma and Solar and. We did a little bit of research as to that and that particular product has been on the market since. Before twenty seventeen, there was a time back around circa twenty twenty seventeen when this was initially introduced onto the market. And they had to do a battery recall. They they did that and they honored their warranty for that product. They they went back to the. Design retweaks and things and modified that battery and has been since on the market and successfully. Implemented and with no known issues to to date. So did want to mention. That little tidbit about the warranty that that is included and it was baked into the RFP process. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over for any questions or concerns that I can try to help answer.
Great, thank you much, Jared. Appreciate it. Do we have any questions from council members on this? And it looks like I see a hand from Fred and then Charles.
Yeah, just two questions. One is, and it's nothing against the company that that we're selecting. It seems like they're pretty solid. Is it unusual just to get one bid on this type of job?
You know, it was it was our first RFP in this realm. We did make a few phone calls and talked with a couple local nearby and they just said their their workload is is so pressed at the moment. They received. The the documents and they are interested in the project, but just didn't have the timeframe to deliver because the RFP. Because the grant has a has a short term window for for that payout. We were kind of required to have the project completed on on a near term, which is this year. So a few companies, it was just a little too short term for them for such a large project.
Okay, and then the second question is regarding the community center and it may be hard to answer because I know there's nothing. Solid regarding improvements down the road, but if this work is done and then there's improvements to the community center. How do those two get meshed in? In other words, this stuff won't get ripped out or, you know, I guess we don't want to pay for something and then have to change it or rip it out.
That's a great. That's a great. Yeah, absolutely. Good point and. We, we looked at some initial real conceptual level plans. That, that, via the, the Parks and Rec. Team and, and looking, looking over what potentially might be happening there down the road. And what we were seeing is expansion toward the plaza, toward that plaza you can see to the west of the main building. And in the hope there is so much of this Community Center. Is, is surrounding that large space with those large trusses, exposed trusses out there. And that's where the solar is going to go. It's going to go on that high vaulted roof. So, the, the intent is that we're not putting it on the, the lower roofs, the roofs that would be more impacted by a, a moderate. Expansion of that first story with the hope that the, the high vaulted roof would remain intact as is. With that solar in place.
Okay, thanks and, thanks and great job getting grant money, by the way. Good job.
Great questions, Fred. Charles, did I see your hand?
Yeah, so my, my only question with the grant and just in general is. Do you find that installing the solar on the roofs is the more economic and easier maintenance? Installation with the grant allow covered. Parking areas and other things that like resolays and other things where it could actually serve more use. Than just the solar generation for kind of like, you know, Redwood High and those type of things, or do you find that those installations are more expensive? And we're going to get more bang for the buck if we just put it up on the roof and leave it.
Yeah, I, I think the latter, just having the, the roof opportunity in both of these locations. It worked out if, if the roof was not sufficient to meet our needs. I think you could have seen some portion expanded out to a covered sort of feature. It would be in, at that point, you have to build an additional, you know, cover, covered space and then use the solar on top of that. So, there is some sunken costs associated with that. But I think in this, in this case, we were capable of putting it on that existing roof surface and it, it met the need. So, I think that's when we just accepted that and, and didn't really look too much further down the road. I think in a different. Setting that could absolutely have some.
Like you said, there's a twenty five percent contingency to add more in the future, so maybe those could be more integrated and, and thought about in the planning.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Charles. Let's see, I'm going to scroll through here. There's Bob. Bob, no questions? Great, thank you. And Leela has her hand up. There we go. Sorry about that.
Thanks, no worries. Just a quick question about the numbers. Did I see it right that it's a three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar grant? But our contract that you're proposing is up to two hundred, is two hundred and sixty one thousand? Just wondering that. That extra forty, is that like reserve in case it goes over or is there any way to use that extra money?
Yeah, so we have a twenty six thousand dollar contingency, which is pretty standard for, for this type of work. So, it's right, you know, to eighty seven, I think that comes out to be. So, pretty close to the, the full allocation we're looking at, at using. And, you know, maybe as we get into the, the fine details, we can find a way to. To, to capture any additional that's needed.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you, Leela. Let's go back to Charles.
All right, maybe I missed something. Is there a maintenance contractor? Are we going to own the facilities afterwards and do in-house maintenance of the? Solar panels?
It's not part of this contract, not to say that it can't be a future endeavor to get a maintenance contract work together. It wouldn't be included, included and covered in the, in the grant allocation though.
Great, thank you. I'll do one more sweep for any last hands up from council members. And I'm not seeing any, so with that, we're going to turn this over to the public. So, any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead. And raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at TCM mail dot org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
No, Mayor Beckman, we did not receive any emails, public comments on this item.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up from the public, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council. For any further discussion and a possible motion. Bob?
Yeah, just very quickly, Jared, you guys are amazing getting grants. I mean, I, I see a lot more through B pack, but this is. A huge amount of money that's going to set us up. You know, we're heading into a season where we could be looking at power shut offs for fire. And having solar solve so many problems. So, thank you guys for doing such a great job on getting grants. And this looks like a terrific proposal and I'm going to move to approve.
Great, thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Charles? Great, thank you, Charles. Charles seconds. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan.
Yes.
Councilmember of Asia.
Yes.
Thanks, Marcus Sisa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you, Beck. And thank you very much, Jared and team. Great job there. And that concludes item five A and brings us to our business items. First business item tonight is six A, which is consideration and possible authorization. For the town manager to enter into a lease agreement with professional investors forty seven for temporary office space. At two forty Tamil Vista and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, this is a follow up discussion, you know, as we, you had an open time. Comment about the Town Hall project. This, this is an ongoing conversation we've been having with the council and the community. One of our major issues as we reached kind of the last year conversation regarding the Town Hall project was one that. As COVID hit, really understanding all the limitations and the code violations within our current building, especially related to the fires. You have asbestos issues, we have mold, we have a lack of space, we have ADA violations. We're just in a really bad predicament. And so, when COVID happened, I had a number of conversations publicly with the council that. We're not going to reopen Town Hall. We just, as we, as we've been used to. And so, the conversation that we had back a, a few months ago, back in June, and even earlier than that this year. Was we have two options. One is that we can lease space. For the foreseeable future for the next decade. What does that look like? And we talked about that and you know, we. We could probably get by with sixty five hundred, seven thousand square feet. We could, we could, we could lease space, but it was at a cost of about anywhere from four hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars depending. On what we did. And really, we thought that the council at the time thought that was a poor use of public funds. And so, we came back and we really focused on what is the minimum that we need to really solve a fifty year problem, taking in the. And. Taken into consideration. You know, COVID, it gave us a few kind of, it, it helped us in some ways of understanding telecommuting. What can we or can't we do telecommuting as a government agency as a whole, but even. A little bit shower, just looking at each of our departments, how can we operate? You know, some of our departments can't work from home. You just can't. Some of ours can, as an example, I can. But what does that look like within the infrastructure of the town? And so, I still stand here today, this Town Hall project, you know, I think the, the bus has left on that. We're going forward and I'm happy to talk about finances and COVID because we, we've been very busy spending our life. Over the last two years of really preparing for this and getting us through it. Until I have some good positive reports there, but the, the, the issue that we had was, was leasing and so. Over the last month, staff has really worked on, look, we need to open Town Hall. We need to get back to normal business the best we can. We have one hundred percent of our staff is vaccinated. We are positioned now to, to move forward. And to reopen and be safe, as safe as we possibly can, but we need that especially as we start to staff up and make some changes in the building and permitting department. We need to open up one hundred percent of the time to our community, the sooner the better. So, staff really went back to all of our research and the background I just gave you on the leasing opportunities. And one of the best opportunities for us in leasing was Hunt Plaza. It was two forty Tamil, Tamil Vista. And the reason why is there, there's some change in ownership, there's some bankruptcy issues. Really, they were the best deal in town for us during a short period of time, a two or three year outlook. Past that, they'll probably go back to seven dollars a square foot for leasing in this community. And so, you can start to do the math per square foot. But we went back to him, we said, look, if we were to lease for two years. Would you be willing to enter an agreement with the town? And the answer is yes, it's before you today and that's what I wanted to talk to you about. So, for this year, we always planned on taking the Town Hall project a bit in December. And so, somewhere towards the end of this year, we were going to start looking at a temporary space move. Our current budget. Alots two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars to reallocate, relocate our staff. We have been actually focused on just getting some double wide trailers, modulars, whatever you want to call them, and putting them out on Pixley or Town Park. And, and doing something like that. As we started to toss that out, one of the issues we had was one. I don't think anyone in the community wants to look at trailers in the park. Two, you know, and again, we're trying to this, you know. This isn't about staff, it's about opening up and giving a facility and a service to our community. And, and the first one is from an administrative process, but really from the building permitting perspective. So, the, the other piece that we kind of struggled with was what do we do with a community room if we were to do double wide trailers in Pixley Park? And so, we focused on the Community Center, but the Community Center isn't situated to really have council meetings. It just isn't, you know, and it also impact us from a renting standpoint, a technology standpoint. And so. We went back and we really, we did a search again of all the lease opportunities. It took us to Hunt Plaza. And we were able to get them. To agree to a two year contract. It's about fifteen thousand dollars a month. There are upgrades that need to be made to Hunt Plaza for us to move in, to move into it and they're specific to ADA improvements. And so. There's an attachment three that really breaks that down, but the two major ADA improvements are the front ramp to go into the facility. And we need an ADA bathroom. And so, those items are anywhere, you know, from, you know, forty five to sixty thousand dollars. And so, management agreed, ownership agreed to give us a credit of forty five thousand dollars in rent. On this two year contract. And so, that's, that is what is before you today. The other good news for us is that they're willing to, you know, the building as a whole is a little bit dated, but it's, it's nice, but they're, they're going to paint it. They're going to give us new carpet. They're going to change out all the lighting fixtures. As well as the ceiling tiles. And so, that's helpful to us. We have improvements to do to make us fully operational from a building permitting standpoint. Again, I'll, I'm happy to go over that. That is attachment three. The total cost of improvements are about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That, that outline is on page two of my staff report. Again, the overall budget is about two hundred, it is not two hundred and ninety five thousand for the year. If we were looking at a lease from September fifteenth to June thirtieth for the remainder of this fiscal year. That cost is about ninety seven thousand five hundred dollars. Within that period, we would see three months of rent credit towards our improvements. The total office space and site improvements are a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And I apologize for this, but something counts, something we're looking at is furniture, some furniture improvements, but whatever we can take from the current facility. We're just going to try to take it over to the office. Building and then really look at as we work towards our move back to the, to the new Town Hall. We'll really focus on what is the long term ergonomics, furniture, technology that we should look at. But anything that we can purchase now from like a voice phone technology system, any of the technology that allows us to work from home and at work. We're going to look at that and we're only going to make that. That'll come back to council for an ultimate decision. But we're looking at things that we can take to the temporary site as well as to the permanent site. So, we don't want to waste any funds here. We want these to be long term decisions. I gave you a range of thirty to fifty thousand because I think that's what it is. But that, that will be a specific item that I'll take back to you, but I wanted to start to fully disclose and be transparent on some of the items that we're looking at. Regardless, if you looked at the furniture technology and voice system. A contingency, the office space and site improvements and the rent for this year, we're looking at a total budget of about two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars this year. Again, that is below what we budgeted for. I'm looking at this, right now, our. Our, 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 our schedule tells us that this, this will take us into, you know, February, March, the spring of twenty twenty three. I think realistically, we're saying, hey, that's planned on our project going until July of twenty twenty three. At that point. At the end of this lease, if we do have any delays or if anything happens, we can go month to month with, with ownership. Also, on the fiscal impact on page two, I wanted to outline really the long term cost of this lease because it touches really three fiscal years. And so, you can see what that is. It's a total of about four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. This, this amount, again, will be budgeted over three fiscal years. It'll allow us a couple of things. I, I think it's our best opportunity, one, to be efficient, to save money, to open the operation and to allow us the, the minimum amount of space. We need to have community meetings, to move our, our offices, all of our staff together and open immediately. At the most cost efficient price. And it really jumped out at us at the time. I, I wanted to give you. Really the trailer option, but it's, it's just not an option. It's a waste of funds. It, it doesn't operationally make sense, I think. So, I really. I think this is the way to go. I, I recommend it. I'm happy to answer any questions. You have the lease agreement, the draft one that is attached. Attachment two is the addendum. And again, attachment three really breaks down the hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Of, of the improvements that we're looking at. We will get a forty five thousand dollar. Credit for those via the lease. And I want to thank Jared and his team. Jared really took the lead on this and, and problem solved to really make this work for us. This wasn't an easy evaluation for staff. So, thank you, Jared, for your expertise on that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, council.
Great, thank you so much, Todd. Do we have any questions from council for staff on this item? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, Todd, some of these are just for clarification. In the beginning, I think you mentioned that City Hall is not going to reopen. Can you just clarify what that means for services to our residents? So, that they're aware of it?
Well, we said it publicly multiple times and the Town Hall is closed. So, we only allow appointment only. Nothing has changed. So. We've been pretty, as a staff, been pretty straightforward about that. Again, staff is in the building just because it's closed. But the, the issue we have is, one with COVID and all the restrictions from a health standpoint. You can't have all your staff together at once due to the current condition of Town Hall. And so, our communications have been pretty consistent, I think, with that.
Fred, I think you were kind of getting at though, the fact that it's, we're going to have public facilities open, like we're going to have a public counter open in the new rental space, right? During the interim, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Nice, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying for me.
Sure, and, and that is correct.
That's, that is it. I want to open. For what I looked like, working with county health, I said, what is the minimum amount of space I need to open one hundred percent of our services? Five days a week. What do I need? And so, this, this before you allows us to do that. We would have to work through the building department to get our permits and, and do the work, so that will take a little bit of time. But as soon as that is done, we, my goal over the next two months is to fully open Town Hall services.
Okay, and then there will be a new space. There will be a community room, right, where eventually we'll wind up having town council meeting, commission meetings, all that.
Yeah, so, there's two suites. One oh eight is for the offices, one ten is the community room. And so, that community room would be our council space on September fifteenth on. We'll have access to it if you approve this. And we'll start to put the techn- technology and, and infrastructure into that room to allow us to have meetings, hybrid meetings, whatever. You know, our future looks like at the end of September, start of October. We'll be listening for that.
Okay, and the last question is the current trailers in the parking lot, those will stay there?
Yeah, so the current trailers will stay there through the completion of the project. We're going to keep the engineering team to save a little bit of money. Because we have a good deal with that trailer. They are going to be the project managers of that, that project. So, we're going to keep them on site. So, the engineers, the public work engineers and project managers will stay on site where they are now.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you, Fred. Any other questions from council on this? And if not, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. So, any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment. At TCM mail dot org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
I just refreshed it and no, we did not receive any emails, public comments.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up from the folks on the line, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Anybody have any thoughts they want to share on this? Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. It's going to let staff work normally again, which they desperately need to do. It will improve their efficiency enormously because they'll be able to talk to each other and see each other. Everything's going to work faster. We'll have a face to the public. The public will be happier. I think it's just, it's a really good solution and I think we should absolutely go ahead and do it. And it lets us open to the public again, which is also critical. So, I'm all for this.
Absolutely, thank you, Bob. Any other comments from council members? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I can support this also. I think Todd, you came up with a great option. I think that the lease seems like it's a pretty good deal up to $3 a square foot. Because he mentioned usually it'd be like seven or so and getting, I want to say up to three months free rent. And it's a much better option than having trailers on Pixley or in Town Park. And I agree with Bob, I think we need to get staff in space that's adequate for them to operate, that public can go in and feel safe about this, this period of COVID. So I'm all for this.
Also, just one other thing, yeah, from a real estate perspective, the rate is great, makes a lot of sense. But also I've been in that building a ton recently for some other things. It's a really nice building. This is a nice facility. And even though it's going to be much further for me to drive to go to meetings, I'm all for this.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll just say, I, I think Bob and Fred hit it right on the head. And it's just like, you know, from at the most basic levels, like we knew we had to rebuild town hall in order to make it safe. We knew that we were going to be moving out during construction, we budgeted for it, we planned for it. I'm just really grateful, Todd, to you and staff that you were able to make this work under budget. I think that's, you guys have done it again. So thank you. And with that, I will call for a motion.
Moves approved.
Oh, great, thank you, Bob. And do we have a second? Yeah, Fred, perfect, thank you. So Rebecca, Bob moves, Fred seconds, and can we have a vote, please, when you're ready?
Council member Lee?
Yes.
Council member Monken?
Yes.
Council member Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cisso?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. That brings us to item six B, which is consideration and possible authorization to include, include additional town facilities in the LED streetlight replacement project. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be back to share screen here. So can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
All right. Fast forward here. Okay, so I just have this one slide, but I did want to touch base on, on the project as a, as a whole. Kind of rewind a little bit and, and, and talk about the, the larger project here, which is the, the streetlight conversion project to LED. So back in 2019, staff budgeted about $500,000 for this, for this project. And, and that was off of just initial cost studies. And then in early 21, earlier this year, we were fortunate enough to secure a facility financing contract with Tanco street lighting for $260,000 plus contingency, about $300,000 to cover the, the street lighting for the full street lighting for all the town replacement or conversion to LED. And that project is going well and it's, it's underway right now. Part of the review that they performed, the, the contractor and installer was an audit of all existing town owned streetlights. And so as they were doing that audit, we had a conversation with them of what additional effort it would take for them to also audit other town owned properties for the lighting contained within. And that's what this staff report presents here. They came back and they, they gave us a very exhaustive list of all, I mean, every light that we have at all of our town and facilities, including our fire stations, a courtyard, Park Madera Center, exterior lighting and, and you name it, they've looked at it. And, and they, they went through and, and diagnosed where we could have, you know, additional savings via replacing these fixtures or in some places, it's just a screw in bulb with an LED option. So some of these were, were nonfunctional and as part of this, we're going to make them functional again. And so it's kind of an all encompassing additional effort that we're, we're utilizing the, the skilled trained contractor that's, that's going to be doing our streetlights. And we're, we're asking for your approval to allow them to also do additional LED retrofits for ornamental fixtures, not street lighting. So just formally, we're looking at the Minky Park gazebo, the Park Madera Center exterior lighting, fire stations 13 and 14 exterior lighting, our courtyard for a public works team, exterior lighting, that is. And then at Paradise Drive pump station as well. So out of those locations, we have just over 100 fixtures that are existing that we're proposing to revamp and, and create into LED fixtures. So, so what we're looking or talking about is an additional about $30,000. And we're going to propose to roll that into the, the streetlight project that the grander project that they're already cranking on, such that when they get out here to do the, the, the formal streetlight retrofit for all the roads, they can also be present to do the fixtures here that we're, we're talking about. So it's not a huge involved staff report, but I'm happy to address any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Jared. Do we have any questions for staff? We'll start with Bob.
Yeah, I just had one and I talked to Todd about this earlier, but I just wanted to confirm with you as well, Jared. There was a big problem on Sir Francis Drake and Bonner with LED lighting going in a few months ago, which is still going on. And they're probably going to have to tear it all out. We've learned from that and we're not going to have that problem here, right? We're not going to light up the whole night sky with the LED lights. And we will be able to screen them from homes when they're right in front of homes, like there is in one front of mine, incidentally. So just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, no problem. Absolutely confirmed. The, the, the message we heard loud and clear during the early phase of our review at this project was to keep the color temperature of the lighting reasonable and, you know, nice and warm. I think 3,000 is the number that sticks to mind off the top of my head, 3,000 Kelvin color temperature. And it's not going to be the real bright blue LED lighting that you may have heard negative things about. It'll be a much more warmer, softer kind of orange glow streetlight is, is what we're going for there.
That's great because apparently they're being faced with having to tear out everything they put in on Sir Francis Drake and replace it with lower scale lighting. So.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do not want that to happen here and, and I do not foresee that being the installed item as, as far as we can, can regulate it, it'll be a warmer 3,000 or less.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And then just real quickly, just wanted to touch on the, the screening. We will also be installing shields where there are existing shields on existing streetlights. So if, if you are familiar with the shielding process and procedures, then yes, you'll get another shield for this project as well. There are opportunities for more shields should the requests come in for that also.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. Great point. Any other questions from council members? Just going to scroll through here, Lila.
Just curious, I know you're talking about the color, you know, keeping it kind of a warm light. So would an average person be able to tell that there's a difference? Do you think, or I'm just curious, like?
I honestly think so.
You think they, they could be able to tell?
Yes, I, I think so. The, the real bright blue LED lights. I, I might be biased, but I, I think I would be able to tell.
Oh, no, sorry. I mean, with what you're proposing, the warm light versus what we have now.
Oh, oh, I am sorry. That's a great question. I don't think, I don't think it's going to be a significantly discernible difference between what we have now. I think inherently the, the existing lights that, that are out there are, are just a touch bit warmer. But, but that's the intent is to provide an LED replacement that as closely matches that as possible, so.
Yeah, didn't we put up some samples too for people to look at in the community? Where are those again, where people can come and look at them at night?
Yeah, absolutely, Todd, good point. We did install two right across the street from town hall. So if everybody wants to look out the town hall window, I'm just kidding. Right there at Willow and Tamil Pious, there's an ornamental fixture. And then one light south on Willow, it's a Cobra Head. And that is the other location. So there's an ornamental lamp post style LED. And then there's also a Cobra Head LED on Willow. So those were installed to as like, you know, more or less pilot prior to this project going in.
Great, thank you, Lila. Good question. I saw Charles' hand.
Yeah, so with the Minky Park gazebo upgrades, the lighting that's there, it's just for occupation of pedestrian use. Looks like there's uplights and then downlights. Is there an opportunity to study and, and, and create a more band friendly lighting scenario? Since it is used a lot for events and, and at least think about that, that aspect of it. Because I don't know that that system is currently there. We plan on installing it, but it is something that if we're going to go do it to do it right and in sync with each other, might be something to at least think about. And then the other one is, is is there, do we, do we do lighting along bike paths, you know, along the creeks and, and that type of thing, solar? And in the future, if we have other excess funds, would that be something that is good for the community? Is another just kind of overall question, if that's been studied or whether we promote that or whether we like to keep them dark for, you know, nature. It's just my, not having discussed it before, is curious point for me.
Yeah, real quick on that one. I know some of our step lanes and pads do have lighting on them up in Christmas Tree Hill. And that is included as part of this town light LED retrofit. So where we do have existing lighting, we're looking at retrofitting it. And I do know there are some future design paths right there between Echo and San Clemente. And something that we're studying for that is adding lighting into the project scope. As you know, it is an ecological preserve right there. So that is definitely something we want to be sensitive to and acknowledge. We don't want to disturb, you know, nature at night. But in general, this, this project is just looking at replacing existing. But also moving forward, it's, it's part of the conversation with regards to new bike paths.
Okay, and then for the Minky Park, did you want, like, maybe Todd or someone like, is that something that ultimately the town could support or be interested in or is that for a different day in discussion?
It might be for a different day in discussion, but I think it's something that has merit and we're happy to put our heads together and, and, and come back to the council with some options because you're right, that, that is, I think we need to look how we're using Minky Park. And there's something to that. So we can definitely put our heads together and bring something back and work with you on that.
Great, all righty, thank you, Charles. Any other questions from council for staff on this? Just going to scroll through here one last time, not seen any hands. So we'll turn it over to the public now. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org and we will start with Patty.
Good evening, and I am very excited to see that you're moving to LED. We did that at the Village Green on our landscape lights and it was a great project. So very happy to see about that. Of course, I'm going to ask what the plans are for additional lighting on Casa Buena. And I heard through the grapevine that we're getting pushed a year out by PG&E. So that's disappointing. I just wondered if the lights are still in the mix for Casa Buena. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Patty. And we'll just get to that as soon as we finish taking any other public comment. And I'm not seeing any other hands up right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
No, Rebecca, when we did not receive any emails, public comments.
Great, thank you. And seeing other hands up, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. And I'd like, Jared, if you could start by talking about lighting on Casa Buena, if you can. And then Todd, if you can feel free to jump in. And then Todd, if you wouldn't mind in your manager report, just addressing the Casa Buena project overall, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly, Mayor Beckman. So the, the, the little to report that I'm aware of regarding street lighting on Casa Buena is we have a upcoming meeting scheduled with PG&E and it's, it's a more holistic meeting. But one of the items at the meeting is going to be, it's an agenda to discuss their, their involvement with, with any future street lighting that can be out there, just to discuss logistics, the, the ability to get electricity to it. We've, we've had some brief conversations about getting solar lighting for street lighting out there. But I think the, the best avenue, I think from a cost standpoint is, is if PG&E is capable of hard wiring and a streetlight system. But that would be, you know, part of the overall larger project, which, which I think was mentioned that PG&E is going to be in front of with their big transmission and distribution projects.
Great, thank you, Jared. Any other comments from council members on this item? And if not, we'll take a motion. I'm just scrolling through here for hands. I think I'm seeing any. Yo, Charles, hey, sorry.
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on some of the other council questions. I, I think I can, I've worked with a lot of lighting engineers in the airport environment and 3,000 Kelvin is what we use in the, the hold rooms to create a nice relaxing space for people to kind of rest and recuperate. And then you bump it up in the higher circulation corridors, but even that, they tend not to do that too much anymore because it is so glaring with the LEDs. And I think the, the project that was mentioned, I think that that wasn't a town project. I think that ultimately that was Caltrans and Caltrans had specific requirements that are usually for high use corridors like the freeways. And so that's why they ran into some issues when it kind of came down into more residential experience. But hopefully we'll be able to avoid that. I know when we reviewed the contract with the LED, I had great confidence that they're going to take this very seriously with the, with the, the town and, and the residents. So I just wanted to kind of address those issues more thoroughly.
Great, thank you. Hey, Jared, could I ask you to unshare your screen just so I can see the whole council here? Sorry. Awesome, thank you. Great, thank you, Charles. Do we have any other comments from council members? And if not, would somebody like to make a motion? Bob?
I'll move to provide authorizations to do this.
Great, thank you, sir. Charles seconds. Thank you, Charles. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Council member Monken?
Yes.
Council member Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cisso?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes our business items and brings us to council reports and we'll start with the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I missed you all. So we have, we have a few, a few updates, I'll hit high level, but I'll start with your question, Mr. Mayor. So Casa Buena Complete Streets is one of our last major projects from our capital improvement plans that we've, we have a lot of capital improvement plans, but it's one of the last major ones in our community to really deliver. So it's a priority to us. One of the really good things the public works team started a few years ago that I really appreciate because we haven't always been that good. And it seems so simple, but it's to reach out to the utilities, all of our fellow utility companies saying, look, what's your schedule for projects? Here's our schedule, what's yours? So to make sure that when we have opportunities to do things together, or worst case, do a project and have them come behind us and rip up our streets, right? So when we started looking at our capital improvement plan a few years ago, we, we did that. And we were told there was nothing in the area of Casa Buena. Recently was brought to our attention that they do have, and it's an important project for them. It's to improve and it's safety to transmission lines through the corridor. It has to happen. It's one that has never been shared with us and we've had a number of meetings. And so staff to staff, we've had some honest conversations amongst each other. But where we really landed was like, look, we need a problem solved together. This is an issue. We're not going to just accept it, you need to work with us, we want to work with you. And we have a good relationship with them, not happy with what's happened and how we got to this point, as Patty brought up. But we've agreed to, to meet monthly, as Jared said. So we have another meeting coming up and we're basically, we have their whole team, we have our team. And we're trying to really, we have three major projects. One is PG&E. Two is replacing the sanitary district lines underneath, right? And then the third one is our complete And then the third one is our complete streets project, which in our mind, it's sidewalks, it's street improvements, and it's lighting. And so we're gonna, you know, so we're we're putting our heads together and it's a kind of a monthly. We made a lot of progress over the last 30 days, but I think we need another 30 to 60 to really. Understand this and what our options are, and then we're gonna start to bring this to council. I will keep the council apprised. And we'll probably bring a report to the council. We'll let the whole Casa Buena neighborhood. We'll notice them just to give them a quick update because we don't want to surprise anyone, but this isn't a staff directed delay. And and I and I'm not even gonna accept the delay at this point. I'm gonna say, is there a way that we, what we're looking at right now? Is we know we have to do the sanitary district lines. Is there a way when we cut up the roads? To do that simultaneously in steps with PG&E and to allow them to do the work they need to do and also allow us to do the work that we need to do. And and can we save six months, eight months? What are some options? So that's what we're doing right now. But we'll bring that conversation publicly as we go, but I think we really need another 30 to 60 days. Ultimately, what this will look like three to three years out. Casa Buena, you know, it's what we expect of our town. Our neighborhood is protected, it's safer both underneath the street and above it. And so we're we're committed. I just want Patty and and everybody to know that. We understand, we need to deliver that project and and we're gonna work with PG&E and our utilities. We're also gonna look at undergrounding opportunities as well. Um, and so that's something that I stepped in and we're looking at, as you know, we're doing the PG&E. Kind of analysis, right now we're 50% into completing the survey with the consultant. Our consultant is 25% complete with really going through all the PG&E data. And so once we complete the data analysis with our survey, and our survey is important because it's how our residents. Function daily normally through COVID, however it is, how do they function? Because it's important of how they use. That data will be important to us on our ask and how we approach PG&E. Um, and so we we have our rule 20A and B kind of project that we talked about at the bottom of Christmas Tree Hill. And we're also looking at opportunities through this process with the consultant, kind of expanded some of his analysis. To help us with this conversation with PG&E as we cut into the ground, are there ways to underground and add? You know, lighting opportunities through that corridor. And so I'm. I am confident that we will have some good updates for the council. The schedule will probably be impacted months. But we don't want it to be impacted years. That is unacceptable, and I don't think that'll ultimately happen. So I will keep you all apprised of that. A few other, um, any questions with that before I go on? Okay, um, one of the things I wanted to update. Via next door, we've had a, thank you to Mike Moriarty and the team, but Public Works is just really attacking it. So we had a couple of projects that were delayed last summer and they're about to come forward now. One of them is the street rehabilitation. On Harbor Echo Yolo, Edge Marway, Channel Drive, Baja Court. Pacific Queen Passage, Flying Cloud Course, Meadow Ridge Drive and Ridge Court. They are all going to have ADA ramps and be ADA accessible, our improvements, we're gonna fix the streets. We're also, um, you know, along the Paradise Corridor, we've gotten a lot of complaints from San Clemente as you go down fronting. Uh, Par- Paradise Shopping Center, uh, we're gonna improve all of that coming up in the coming months. And so it's full steam ahead. This is one of the reasons why that we hired our project manager. Our in-house project manager to really manage these projects, to notice our community, to work with our communities, to to deliver these. These are exciting projects for the community, but also it's a major impact for them through that quarter. There's only, you know, two ways in and out of that area. So. A lot of. Updates have been going on via next door into our community, uh, and I'm really excited about that. The demolition of the budget end was delayed due to some PG&E utilities. Those have been capped and handled, so the demolition of the budget end is scheduled for September 10. And so that will be knocked down and then hopefully construction of a new building will follow. Let's see, and I wanted to, it was brought up again, and I'm just gonna keep telling this message, but I'm gonna share my screen here. Want to share with council just some of your decisions and public policy that you've made recently. That I want the community to be aware of. And it has to do with fiscal. So this is. This is a fiscal conversation real quick, but people talk about COVID and the impacts and COVID absolutely impacted. But the town of Cordera from a council on down from your expectations of us of staff. Was problem solve and have solutions. And and so this is what we have been doing. So you go back to March of 2020 when this happened. So COVID has really hit three fiscal years. So let's go to 2019, 2020. This is what happened leading up to that to COVID and then at the start of COVID. We built up a $3 million surplus in funds and the surplus wasn't, we cut back services. We've been enhancing and services since 2017 to now. We continue to add services. The goal directed by council was find a way to maintain them through the good times and bad. And so what we did is we developed $3 million in surplus funds. The council designated a million dollars to the pension trust. That pension trust is now at $4 million. We moved from a 10% or $2 million reserve fund to a 20% or $4 million reserve fund. And then we carried over $232,000 in unrestricted funds from our general fund into the following year, just to see what happened, right? Still, now we're in the heart of COVID. So 2020, 2021, what happened this year? So June 30th of this year. Our ending balance of a surplus is 3.320 million dollars. And so that is not, that does not include the American Rescue Act monies. That is a direct. Correlation to our economic development, all the work of the council, the commission, the planning commission and our planners. Set us up with some of our proactive work of really bringing in. The auto dealers are a major portion of our sales tax funds. And when the governor, um, you know, released his expectations by I believe 2034 of going fully electric, which is a big ask. We then focused on our economic development and we do analysis just like our major property owners in commercial business do, and we look at leakage. Where are the opportunities for Cordera where we're really successful and where are the shortcomings? And we focused on the Tesla model, which was very successful for us of electric dealerships. We added three electric dealerships this fiscal year, and the impact of that revenue stream. Is the correlation of this ending surplus right here. Now, there's no doubt that we saw online sales went way up, right? Because people were at home doing online sales. But for the town of Cordera, it was online sales, and it was the electric car dealerships that carried the day for the town of Cordera right here. And it's not by luck. And and I and I give credit again to the council, the planning commission and our planners. Of being really proactive of 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 working closely with our commercial dealers to make something, owners to make something like this happen. The other thing that we did this year is we designated with our sales tax oversight committee, $2.5 million of additional emergency funding. Should something like a pandemic, a natural disaster happen, that we have extra emergency reserves available to us should something happen. The next piece that we did is we received the first of two $1.1 million American Rescue Act funds installments. The first $1.1 million that we received and we have on hand, $300,000 has been designated. To offset losses to our Park Madera Center Fund. Because of COVID and and impacts that we helped with prop, you know, with the renters and leasers to to help them stay afloat. Um, and so we currently have approximately $866,000 remaining in that monies. And we're expecting an additional $1.1 million in July of 2022. I'll talk about that in a second. Um, our pension trust, we have $4 million in it right now. Our OPEB, which is our retiree health unfunded liability trust fund is $4 million. It's 55% of our unfunded liability is now funded in that fund. Calpers, Calpers is currently, as you know, we bonded and we bonded $18 million plus an unfunded liability. And instead of a 7% interest rate, we got it down to a 2.9% interest rate. What we did now is in 20 years, that fund will be paid off at a lower interest rate. And then by policy, we opened up an $800,000 annual savings arbitrage. To evaluate, how did Calpers rate of return do this year? Did they overperform or under? If they underperform, we move that savings arbitrage straight to Calpers to keep them fully funded, right? We don't want them to get worse. Well, what has happened this last year? They had a 21% rate of return. And so from that 21% rate of return, it is fully funded, our Calpers fund by 103%. I'm gonna show you a quick slide about that in a second, but it's significant. Because currently Calpers is at a 7% discount rate. And so for us, what does the pension fund mean then? Well, the pension fund is the 1% difference, the 2% difference of 7% to 6% to 5%. That fund would offset if Calpers ever reduce their discount rate, that fund is there to pay it. So right now with our 103% fully funded, Calpers is looking at reducing. The discount rate from 7%, possibly down to 6.8, 6.6 or 6.5%. If they were to do that, we have the funds currently on hand with Calpers to be fully funded if they reduce it to 6.6%. I'm gonna show you what that dollar amount is in a second. It's significant. Uh, the council should be recognized for their decision making, because when we bonded, the timing of it positioned us. Amongst our cohorts in the state of California, we're at the top. We have a, we have the fighting chance. To position ourselves for success and fully fund in the next 20. Upcoming decision points for council in October, you're gonna have two major ones. Dari and her team will bring something to you on two key decision points. The first one is, what do you want to do with the designated operating surplus that we currently have informed through COVID? It's 3.890 million dollars. What do you want to do with that? The recommendation of staff will probably be somewhere in between. One will be, let's allot some of that money towards that town hall project, right? Offset some of that. Possibly an equipment replacement fund if we have the, let's build that up a little bit. And then also, let's look at fully funding our retiree health trust fund. Right? The council's direction right now by policy is is the latter. It's the retiree health trust fund. That's where the arbitrage, that's where savings goes to. Let's fully fund that immediately. Right now, we're 3 million short. And we're fully funded and you'll see a report on that. The second piece is the need to designate the remaining American Rescue Act funds. Currently, there's 866,000 available to us immediately, another $1.16 million July of 22. What does the council want to do with that? We'll give you a full analysis on what the rules are, the criteria. Um, we'll help you with some recommendations, but that is 100%. However, the council deems necessary, um, moving forward. And so that is an exciting. Kind of decision, I think, and conversation for our community. And the last piece I just want to show you because I've been a public. Employee, you only hear about pensions. And again, I wanna, I wanna give it to you. So here's the decision that we had back. You know, um, earlier this year, we started this conversation with, hey, this this line right here where my cursor is. It was all about savings arbitrage. So if we build a policy, right? Annually of like our decision making, if we know we're gonna save money, we need to fund it somewhere else. And what are we gonna do? We thought it was gonna be about 756,000. We ended up because of the interest rate, 2.97%. It was the best in the state of California when we got it, because we're AAA rated. Uh, with a lot of our fiscal management, 826,000 is that number. That $826,000 doesn't need to be touched if Calpers lowers their discount rate. From 7% to 6.6, we're one of the only cities or towns I can say that in the state of California because of our decision making and moving forward. What does that mean?
Todd, real quick, are we still looking at that same word document?
I'm sorry, can you see it right now, what I have up?
I'm just seeing that same word document right now. I didn't know if you moved on to something else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. I didn't want to interrupt because I liked what I was hearing, but I wanted to see the.
Can you see this right now?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I'm so sorry. So I'm gonna go back. So this was the conversation back in 2020. Remember, we talked about this for 18 months. We wanted to focus, understanding bonding wasn't the solve. It was one of the tools in the toolbox. So we wanted to bond at a lower discount rate and build the savings arbitrage annually by policy. That number at the time was 756,000. Moving forward of all the things in in the plate, the the policies that the council put in place. We went from a double A credit rating to a triple A, the highest rating you can get as a public agency. That allowed us to get a 2.9% interest rate, lowest in the state of California at the time. And it built that eight, that savings arbitrage by seven, 756 to 826, 826,000 annually. So what we thought, when we made this decision, and this is only a couple of months. So a lot of times when you do actuary reports, run funded liability Calpers. It goes back 12 to 18 months. I'm giving you today numbers. These are today numbers. And so we were like, let's take this savings arbitrage. The first decision is if Calpers underperforms. Let's move this 826 towards Calpers annually to make sure they don't. They don't build an unfunded liability anymore. We control that now annually, and then we pay down our bond in 20 years. If we do that by policy and practice, we solved unfunded liability, right? And so move forward. Where are we today since we bonded? Well, Calpers, when we did the pension obligation bonds earlier this year, we left a slight unfunded liability. Um, we bonded $18 million. We left 2.5 million dollars of unfunded liability back with Calpers. Why? Because we didn't want to overfund it over that period of time. Keep in mind, when you think about. Fully funding Calpers, the $4 million pension trust is sitting there as a as a redundancy in the system. Ultimately, when the, when our future leaders 15 years from now are out. They're gonna look at that pension trust and go, let's fully fund this thing now. Let's do it in 15, not 20. That's what we're positioning our future leaders to make. At the time though, we kept it at 2.5 because that year, they went up a little bit. They underperformed, right? They underperformed, they they had a rate of return at the time of 4.7%. They didn't hit the 7% mark that we all talk about. The pension reformers say you have to lower the discount rate. What did that mean? It added an additional 1.1 million of unfunded liability. So going into this fiscal year, we had $3.6 million of unfunded liability. What happened this last year? They had a 21% rate of return. You can't depend on that. That's not, that's a, that's an anomaly, but that happens. What does that mean for us? Well, let's super fund at our pension trust, $7.3 million. So we currently have. Were overfunded by 103%, right? It's 103% fully funded with Calpers. Calpers rightfully so, this is really smart by them. They're like, look, let's take the opportunity politically. Let's get this discount rate down to six, where we know it needs to be, but let's do it in two steps. So let's take this, this savings that we all got this rate of return, and that's lower the discount rate somewhere in the range of 6.8. To 6.5% immediately, and that decision will be made this summer. So what we did here is we showed some analysis. Right now, the conversation's 6.8. So if they did, and if they move the discount rate down to 6.8. Our unfunded liability would still be super funded by $2 million. We'd still have $2 million in the Calpers pension trust. Right? So the Calpers pension trust is super funded by 2 million. Let's say they reduced it to get this number to zero. You have to get to a 6.6% discount rate. So let's say they move it down all the way to 6.5, which I hope they do. Our unfunded liability number will be within our savings arbitrage is about 825. And so my perfect world council is that they do the right thing and they reduce this thing all the way down to 6.5. Our pension trust for Calpers will be about $800,000 in the negative. And we'll come back to the council saying, let's use that saving arbitrage to fully fund it. And we just fully funded Calpers at a 6.5 discount rate without touching the pension trust. Do you understand that? That 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 is a $2 million swing in our favor of just timing and smart decision making of the council. Um, and I know it's a visual and it's a lot late at night. I'm gonna try to figure out a way to say this succinctly in a page. It is remarkable, the decision that we made of how we came to that decision over 18 months with this, with the. With our finance subcommittee and the decision making of the council. 30 agencies have followed our leader and we've just met with the consultants and they're like, do you know what you guys did? There's 80, a total of 80 Calpers agencies in the state of California that have bonded. 30 since we have bonded have followed our lead in our process of our timing of what we just did. Um, and so I'm just, I'm proud of the council. I'm proud to be part of that. We need to tell the story. So when people talk about. Finances, and I think it's easy to say, hey, what are you doing? We have not. Going all the way back to 2020 to right now, we have never stopped paused as a leadership team. We we said, what do, how we position ourselves for this and where are we going and are we ready to do it? We went in it together and we came out the other side. We're not out of this yet, and it's not time to pat ourselves on the back, but it's definitely important to acknowledge. That we have really taken advantage. When there's downturns. The good towns and cities take advantage of opportunity and we did that. And we did that, and we didn't just put our heads on the ground and say, hey, I hope this all works out. That's the way governmental agencies normally work. We didn't do that, and this council should be acknowledged because it's hard for the five of you to take that leap of faith. When staff is throwing out options and we have these great ideas, but ultimately, you know, it just starts and ends with you. You have positioned this town, and this is a great story to tell moving forward. So with that, I'll stop, but I just wanted to really share that. Heard some of that information. I'm just, you know, that was a big decision we made a few months ago. So, so far, so good.
Well, thank you very much, Todd. That was a very helpful report, and I'm not just saying that because you were singing our praises. That was a lot of really good information, and I think I'm gonna need to go through this a couple more times before it all fully clicks for me. But really, really fantastic, and we appreciate your fantastic guidance every step of the way. We're gonna continue with council member reports. Well, first, are there any questions for Todd about his report? And if not, then we'll go ahead with council reports and we will start with Charles.
The month of August was also off for all the committees that I'm standing on, so there is no new reports.
Great, thank you, Charles. Lila?
Same for me. Yeah, yeah.
Great, great. Bob?
Not for me. We had a fire council meeting and a police council meeting. In both cases, we approved new contracts with the firefighters and the police as well as management salaries. So those went pretty smoothly. We also had a wildfire JPA meeting, a lot of stuff happening there, but. I know this was the most interesting point. Our executive director, Mark Brown, who was a firefighter for, I think, twenty-five years in the county, pointed out. There were three fires in Marin in the last month. The Graceland Fire, which was in San Rafael. The fire up on Mount Tam up near East Peak, and the Corder Medera Fire just a few weeks ago, which I know we all know about. And he said, in all three of those cases, those fires hit defensible space and fire roads. And subsided to the point where firefighters were able to get control of them. And that says we are doing the right thing, and we're pushing forward and doing lots more of that. Which, by the way, we're also doing Corder Medera Avenue right now. We may be done with it. And I'm not sure if it's County or Central Marin Fire, but the lower side of Corder Medera Avenue on the way up to Mill Valley. They're doing an amazing job of clearing all the undergrowth and all the brush and all the tree limbs out of there. It's all piled up on the side of the road. It's huge, but it's really, really the kind of thing we need to be doing to. Save ourselves in the case of a fire. So, lots going on there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. Fred?
Yeah, I also attended the Central Marin Police and Central Marin Fire Council meetings. We had actually had two meetings with age-friendly Corder Medera. Also, age-friendly Corder Medera on August eighth. We recognized, I think, twenty-six or twenty-seven Corder Medera residents over the age of ninety. So we split up in teams of two to three each, and we had, you know, four to five of the residents. We presented them with gift baskets, including a personalized letter from the mayor. All of it was well-received. All those people are great, by the way. Couple of them, we asked like, you know, what keeps you active? And most of them said, hey, one of them just said, hey, going up and downstairs every day and painting, just that was enough. But it was just really great to do that. And then the last piece I want to bring up is just a reminder, and it kind of ties in what Todd is saying. About the EV dealerships we have in Corder Medera. This Sunday from eleven to three, Corder Medera Alliance, it's the EV and Classic Car Show. So I just want to remind everybody about that. We have seven EV dealers lined up, five of which are from Corder Medera. It's probably gonna be one of the few times that you can actually shop for an EV car and have seven dealers all in one place. We also, right now, at this point in time, we have seventy classic cars. All those, I think, are pre-nineteen, early nineteen seventies or so. There'll be three bands playing during the day. Lions Beer and Wine will be there. We have three local food vendors. CMPA is gonna be there with the presence as well as Central Marin Fire Authority. I just think it's gonna be, this event kind of started, I'm cheering it, but it's been a team effort. It kind of started out just being a little local Corder Medera community event. But I think what it's gonna do is really showcase us as Corder Medera. Because we've gotten posters out, I think, a hundred and seventy businesses in Sonoma, Marin, in San Francisco. We've advertised in the IJ, Marin Living Magazine, Marin Scope. We had a radio plug up in Sonoma the other day. We have banners around town. It's turning into a regional event. All the dealers are promoting it, the village is promoting it. So it's just one of those things that it's really a partnership with the village, the town, the lions. But it also is gonna bring business into Corder Medera, not just to the EV dealers. But also to like the local businesses at the village and even town center. And it's a free community event, something for everyone. So just as much plugging as you can do. I know the Lions would appreciate it, and we're getting a lot of press out on social media also. It's just gonna be, you try get excited about it. We walked the site the other day and it's like. You kind of have a vision of something and you can kind of see the reality coming together. It's just, it's gonna be huge. So, yeah, I just gotta say that. Thanks, that's it.
Awesome, Fred. Thank you so much, and thank you for covering police and fire councils for me while I was on vacation. The things that I've done since I got back, mainly CMSA, Central Marin Sanitation Agency. We've got a board meeting coming up and we've had one since I've been back. Two things of note there is Corder Medera is going to be taking the rotating chair of that agency for the coming year. Actually, this last meeting was the first one, so that's, you know, that's good. It's a little added seat at the table for SD two. And then the other thing is that, one thing that I've been pushing really hard for at CMSA is for us to evaluate as an agency over there, whether it makes sense. To issue pension obligation bonds, obviously. All initial indications are that that was a great success here in Corder Medera. And I would love to see that tactic replicated elsewhere in Marin as appropriate. So there's that. The other thing, the League of Cities is having its annual conference coming up, September twenty-second through twenty-fourth in Sacramento. If anybody's interested in attending, registration is still open, so just let me know and I'll connect you with Nancy Hall Bennett, and she will get you all set up. And that is all that I've got. So that concludes our council reports. Do we have any comments on the draft agenda for our next meeting? And if not, we do have an SD two meeting, so we're gonna adjourn the council meeting and convene, I think, a very quick SD two meeting. It's just consent. So we should be able to get through this in a timely fashion. So we're calling to order the Tuesday, September seventh. Meeting of the Board of Directors of Sanitary District Number Two. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Board Member Lee. Board Member Monken. Board Member Avasio. Board Vice President Casissa. And Board President Beckman.
Here, thank you. That brings us to open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to comment on any items not on our agenda, and folks will be given three minutes apiece. Any member of the public who would like to do so, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And I'll ask Rebecca if we got any emailed comments for SD two open time.
No, there are no emails, public comments.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up, so we'll close open time. There are no presentations, which brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. And any member of the board or public may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Would any members of the SD two board like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for SD two. Please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for any SD two consent items? Great, thank you. Then I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move to approve items four A through four D.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second? Lila, thank you, Lila. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Board Member Monken.
Yes.
Board Member Avasio.
Yes.
Board Vice President Casissa.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We have no public hearings or business items on tonight's agenda. Do we have a district manager report?
Just real quick, sorry, I let RJ take ten days off, so I want to give him some props. And it's exciting to see these projects going on. And just, again, I want to, from a sanitary district two perspective. We're about to commence some pretty major sewer projects. El Camino Drive, Estrada Lane, Paloma Drive, Granada Drive, Snore Way, Endeavor Drive, Endeavor Cove. These projects are a total of thirty-four hundred dollar, thirty-four hundred linear feet of sewer main replacement. Forty-six spot repairs and rehabilitation of thirty-three manholes and a total of. Two hundred and twelve lower laterals that we're going to replace as well for residents. And so I'm just, I'm just excited about that and really seeing these projects move forward. A lot of attention to the east side of our community, as you can see in the rehabilitation and sanitary district two.
Great, thank you very much, Todd. Do we have any board member reports from anyone? If not, do we have any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we are adjourned. All right.